Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome the city council chambers to the Land Use Committee hearing. My one and only ground ball that I have is please turn off your cell phones or put it on vibrate to give courtesy of respect to those who want to testify. Before we go into the bill, I just want to say that we have, to my far left is Councilman Ryan Dorsey. To his right is Councilman Zeke Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his left is Councilman Leon Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Second to my left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you, sir.
To my immediate left is Councilwoman Shannon Sneed, who is the vice chair of the committee.
Thank you.
To my far right is Councilman Robert Stokes.
Mr. Chair.
To his left is Councilman Erica Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And we have with us also representing Councilman Brandon Scott's office Rebecca Simmons, who's the general counsel for the committee. We also have Nina Thumbelis representing the mayor's office. So, and to my right is Matthew Peters, who is the staff person for the committee. This is the corrective bill, corrective bill nineteen dash zero four two five. This is a corrective bill. So, the purpose is, the purpose of corrective various errors and omissions in the zoning code article. It's correcting, clarifying, and conforming certain inconsistent, vague, and other unclear language and providing for a special effective date. The public notice requirements have been met. And at this time, we will have Department of Legislative Reference testify. You could, yeah, you can sit right there and use that.
Well, I don't have a lot to say, other than as in the purpose clause, that this is corrective, some of it, some of it, all of it, very boring. And the text is all of three pages, or two pages, actually, pages two and three in the, from the text. It all deals with the signs, which was last revised after the whole article, you know, after, oh, what do we call it?
These are technical in nature, not substantive.
Yeah, they are. And on page, the chart is the longest. It's probably the longest, it definitely the longest chart anywhere in the zoning code and probably anywhere in any code. On page four, there is an explanation of the types of changes, and many are just repeated, a mistake that was left out. On page five are good examples where in a column it says height, width, and location requirements, and the entry was maximum six feet. Well, what, which direction are we looking? And it was height, and that's inserted. It's to correct omissions that were thought obvious or just overlooked.
These are all tables. This is, this is strictly the tables.
This is, yeah. There's a couple of things where I added does and including dropping but not limited to because of a definition. And that's it. It's been reviewed to make sure that I, who am not the most familiar with all the signs law, did not make a mistake. And everybody in zoning that I know of made sure they looked at it and the like. So I can answer questions is about better. We can't go through it all. It would take us a few hours.
But let me, let me turn it over to any of my colleagues on the committee that have any questions or statements. No? Okay. Thank you.
I found it perfectly, wonderfully boring.
Okay. Councilman Dorsey?
I just want to agree with Avery that this is really boring.
Okay, all right.
I didn't hear him, but maybe he didn't want me to hear.
I agree it's boring.
Yeah, we're not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna take a vote on being boring or not boring or whatever.
They don't have to, it's unanimous.
So, we'll start off right now with the Planning Commission?
Thank you. Planning Commission, at its regular meeting on October 24th of 2019, reviewed this bill. They determined that first, this was not a substantive bill nor a site-specific item. It applies generally to the zoning code, as it applies across the city. The clarifications are supported by the Planning Commission, which is recommending approval of this bill.
Okay, thank you. BMCA?
The BMCA stands by its report as favorable.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Mr. Chair, DOT stands by its report, which is no objection.
Law Department?
Law Department is prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. HCD?
DHCD stands by our report, no objection.
Okay, thank you. There's no public testimony. Is there, before we take a vote, you got the, before we take a vote, is there any questions or regards to colleagues? Now, is that boring? Do I have a motion moved?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Sneed. Do I have a second?
It was Councilwoman Clark.
Clark moved?
Yep. No.
I second you.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay. All right, Reissinger votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello is yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's yes. Middleton is absent. She said she'll be late. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett is yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Stokes is yes. So we have, we have seven yes with one absent. Bill passes. What's her name? The next, for second read will be February 10th. This concludes City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four two five. Yeah, that was quick. Zero four two six? Okay, we are now on City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four two six. And the purpose is changing the zoning for the property known as block PSCO lot zero eight five, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, from a I-2 zoning district to the R-8 zoning district. The public notice requirements have been met. And so at this time, if there's any comments from the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Cohen?
Just that we support the continued growth of Bruce Hill Haven Street and look forward to seeing this development take place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Matt? We'll start with the Planning Department?
Mr. Chair, sir. The Planning Commission considered this bill at their October 3rd meeting and voted to recommend passage of Bill nineteen dash zero four two six.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No? Go ahead, give it a, thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm just trying to, this is a, this is a rezoning to end up consolidating and then subdividing for row houses, or am I on the wrong bill?
Row houses.
That's it?
Yeah.
And what's the Meals on Wheels doing there? So, as part of public testimony, we'll find out what Meals on Wheels is doing?
Mm-hmm.
That's all?
Yeah.
I know there, these ladies are all here for this bill because of Meals on Wheels, and they're building 74 row houses, so maybe they're just looking for more customers. They're going to insist that hungry people that need help buy these houses.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. BMCA?
The BMCA stands by its report as favorable.
DOT?
Mr. Chair, DOT stands by its report, which is defer to the Department of Planning.
Okay, let's go with the Law Department.
Mr. Chair, Law Department stands by its report as favorable with suggestions that, it's my understanding, will be addressed during the hearing.
I got it. Okay, thank you. HCD?
DHCD stands by our report in deference to the Department of Planning.
Thank you. BDC?
Mr. Chair, BDC stands by its report of no objection to this bill.
Okay, before we go into public testimony, I know the Law Department has talked to the legal team, Caroline Heckert, do you want to, you, who's going to come up and do the, the?
I'm going to hear from the Meals on Wheels folks first, and then maybe I can address whatever.
You want them to?
Mr. Chair.
I, yeah, Councilman Dorsey?
Yeah, I had a question for planning.
Yeah, I want to do, I want the finding of facts taken care of before we go into public testimony. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. Planning, can you just, what does PSCO mean?
I do not know.
Oh.
Yeah, it's very unusual.
Caroline Heckert, can you ask? Councilman Dorsey's?
It's a public service account. It's former railroad.
Yeah, use the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, so, most, most city blocks have a, have a four-digit number. This, this little piece of land is an abandoned railroad, so the PSCO stands for?
It's Public Service Commission, I think is what it's called.
Got it.
All right. Matt?
I have a question.
Mr. Chair.
Um, I, this is in a railroad right-of-way along, I think, Haven Street, in that industrial zone. So I lived through years on this council with Councilman Kraft and constituents and the efforts to preserve, well, to not build housing on track right-ofways because that generated complaints in what is an industrial part of the city because people living near tracks hear trains and get upset about it. And so when I met the ladies, I thought, maybe I was wrong. It's not going to be a bunch of houses, but it is going to be a bunch of houses. And there's going to be a bunch of people that, à la Councilman Kraft, will be complaining to everybody that it's noisy where they live. What, I mean, I know that planning is familiar with all this, and so somehow you came to support it, and I'd like to know the circumstances of that.
Yes, well understood.
I mean, he could give his opinion, but you want to hear from the councilman who's representing the district, who met with the community and all?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But he wasn't part of that effort, and I wasn't taking it back on him.
If you need any further, let him, let Councilman Cohen, it's his district, answer your questions.
Of course. I mean, I just don't associate you with that whole effort that went on forever and continuously.
Thank goodness.
Well, I, I, of course, was convinced that, I'm not going to vote against the bill. Something, because of you, I know you wouldn't let something happen that would create problems for people, because somehow these ladies are involved with their organization, and it's just that I only associate, but I'll be glad to do what you suggest and ask the councilman if he could explain.
I can, I can ask, I can.
What happened?
So, Councilwoman, definitely appreciate your concern in terms of the challenges that can come with folks hearing the train and complaining. And, you know, this is not unique to Baltimore. This is a lot of cities that are rezoning former industrial areas to now be mixed-use and residential. I will say that, I think in this instance, Caroline, you have these letters, but both the community associations in Bruce Hill voted to support this change. I know that the developer met, I want to say repeatedly with the community associations, talked to the neighbors. I definitely recognize and appreciate your concern that folks not purchase a house and then?
Complain that it's near the tracks.
Complain that it's, yeah, right, that it, and they didn't know. And I know that there is some provisions in, I don't know whether they're fully followed, but I know that there is some provisions for realtors that are supposed to disclose and, right?
Right, I'm familiar with that.
But I will say that both community associations that represent the area are in full support.
Okay.
Is that satisfying, you, Councilwoman?
Yes, I'm, it's, it's.
Mr. Chair, could I give some, some background? So, so I completely understand where Councilman Clark's questions are coming from. Historically, the Planning Department has, has not been supportive of, of any rezonings from industrial, from industrial zoning districts to non, to non-industrial, in particular along the Haven Street corridor. So, in this particular instance, if you refer to the, the associated map with the, the first reader, the vast majority of the site, known as 601 South Haven, was already zoned R-8, so, under Councilman Kraft.
R-8?
So, yes. So, so the, probably 95% of the development site is, is zoned R-8, and that was done during Transform Baltimore. So, the parcel of land in question for this particular bill is a, is, yeah. If I, can I, can I just point out?
Go ahead.
Well, so, so it's this little skinny sliver of land?
I see.
That's what's a question for this bill. All of this is already zoned R-8.
So, that's, where are the tracks?
So, the tracks which are further behind, the, the closest tracks behind this property have also been, have been abandoned. And, and the, the former tracks on this parcel have also been, they used to be railroad siding tracks for, for a warehouse or a plant at this, at this property. Those, those were formally abandoned in 2019. The, the cor, the rail corridor directly to the west, I'm sorry, the east of this parcel has, has also been abandoned, and that's actually the proposed alignment for the, the Baltimore Greenway, Greenway Rails, the 35-mile loop trail, is, is this former right-of-way corridor directly behind this parcel. So, so there won't actually be trains running right behind these new homes. In fact, there'll be, hopefully, not, not too long from now, a 35-mile mixed-use trail for, for biking and for, and for, for.
I'm sure the councilman, being his district, I can't speak for him, addressed those issues before he?
Yes. So, this particular rezoning bill, the Planning Department viewed as a mistake because the, this, these, this parcel, it's a, it's a small, skinny, I forget how wide the parcel is.
In other words, it should have been rezoned.
So, 22, so, yes. So, we view it as a mistake, that's, since the vast majority of the site was zoned R-8 and permits townhouses, this, this portion of land that, that wasn't re, that wasn't rezoned and is still zoned I-1 or I-2, it's, 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 for all intents and purposes, it's, it's worthless. You can't do anything with that land. So, while the Planning Department certainly has had concerns about residential development along Haven Street, as you, Councilwoman, this particular bill, we saw, we, that ship has, had already sailed for this site, since the vast majority was already, is already zoned R-8.
So, it's, so it wouldn't matter, they could still subdivide?
They could still develop.
They could still develop, whether or without this piece of land.
They would have to, it would be, it would be, they would have less land to, to utilize, but they could, townhomes could still be built.
I, you have to understand that I was on this committee with you, well, I was on some committee that Jim Kraft chaired, where these things kept coming through. And I do remember one case in which the, the neighbors were complaining because they had bought their houses, being told that, you remember this, Caroline, being told that the trains don't run here anymore, and ta-da, they did. And that was horrible for, for everybody. So that's why it was, it was not fun when that happened.
All right, we don't, you know.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the committee, and I have an obligation to the history here and to my colleagues.
It's called democracy.
Yes, it is.
We'll go with Caroline, regards to the finding of facts.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I have handed up to Mr. Peters a memo that addresses the findings of fact in a little bit more detail, and I'll go into these orally as well, as well as some exhibits that may make this a little more clear what we're doing. There is a color exhibit of the zoning map, which, which highlights in red the area that we're rezoning. It is actually only a very small piece of land. It's about 8,000 square feet. It's 22 feet deep. It is a former railroad right-of-way, excuse me, which, as Mr. DeSantis indicated, was recently abandoned as a railroad. And there's a letter that's at the back of the memo that I've included that evidences the abandonment of the railroad by the Canton Railroad Company. It's a letter to the Surface Transportation Board of the state of Maryland. So, that railroad is no longer a railroad. There are not rails, you know, rail cars running up and down the railroad there.
And so they can be held liable if, if they decide to run a train down the.
They, I mean, they're not physically tracks anymore. They tore the tracks up, they canceled the railroad, it's all done, like, there's no more railroad there. And as a result, we're requesting that this piece of property be rezoned to the R-8 district. And I think the Planning Commission made some really good findings of fact, and the Law Department suggested that what, what we needed to do to supplement the facts that they found was to add a little bit more about the, the legal standards of change or mistake that have occurred. And I think in this case, there is evidence both that a substantial change has occurred in the, the character of the surrounding community since Transform Baltimore occurred, and that there was a mistake at the time that Transform Baltimore occurred. So I can give you a few examples of things like, and this is all outlined in the memo that I've handed up to you, but since Transform Baltimore was passed by the city council in 2016, there have been a number of changes in this neighborhood. The Canton Crossing Phase Two development opened, the, the brand-new shopping center down on Boston Street, adding 90,000 square feet of commercial space. The zoning board approved the redevelopment of 4015 Foster Avenue into, which is an old industrial building, into offices, a personal training studio, and a brewery with, with a taproom. There was a new apartment building with 371 units approved at 1211 South Eaton Street, which will open later this year. In 2018, following the demolition of the warehouse at 4,001 Hudson Street, Evergreen Homes broke ground on a 36-unit townhouse project. And in city council ordinance 19-282, the city council amended the Canton Industrial Urban Renewal Area to reduce the size of that urban renewal area and pull it back to be south of Boston Street, changing the boundaries of that industrial, industrially-designated area. I think all of these things demonstrate that there has been a change in the character of the neighborhood, the community, since the Transform Baltimore zoning code was enacted, and that supports the rezoning of this property from an industrial zone to a residential zone, consistent with what's located around it. As has been stated before, the properties surrounding this property were all zoned R-8 as part of Transform. This was part of the railroad right-of-way at that time, which has since been abandoned. Now it's no longer appropriate for it to be a railroad right-of-way, and it doesn't need industrial zoning, certainly at this point. We think that also demonstrates that there was a mistake at the time Transform occurred. The Court of Appeals has held that a mistake can occur when the council failed to take into account then-existing facts or projects or trends that were reasonably foreseeable of fruition in the future. One of those things is the development of this townhouse project. It was reasonably foreseeable. They rezoned the surrounding properties to R-8. It was likely that the surrounding properties were going to be developed for residential purposes. And yet, this property remained I-2. It should have been rezoned to R-8 as well, and it wasn't, and we think that was a mistake. We, the courts have also held that a legal mistake also occurs when the property zoning removes from, removes it from any practical use at all. And here, you have an 8,000-square-foot parcel that's only 22 feet deep. It's way too small to have any type of use that would be permitted in the I-2 zone, and therefore, it really is deprived of any practical use that would be allowable under the I-2 zoning, and it's a mistake for that reason as well. The findings that we've outlined are, we go into them in a lot more detail in the memo that you all have in front of you, but I've also passed out a copy of the letter of support from the local community association, and a copy of the proposed development plan for the townhouse project, just for your reference, so you can see how it lays out. And I'm happy to answer any further questions that you may have.
Councilwoman Clark?
I'm fine.
Councilman? Any, any questions to Caroline? No? Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr.
Councilman Stokes, you have a, no, Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious if South Baltimore Business Alliance, Baltimore Industrial Group, or the Baltimore Port Alliance has taken a formal position on this matter?
We reached out to the Baltimore Industrial Group. They were, their general position is that they don't support the rezoning of industrial properties. I think they understand what is going on here. This is a tiny, tiny piece of property that would never have an industrial zone, or never have an industrial use, rather.
Right.
I don't think they're wild about the idea of rezoning generally, but they're obviously not here to register their objection.
Understood and appreciated. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Your question, what about the port?
Yeah, or all three?
They're all collectively under the Baltimore Industrial Group. We didn't speak to the port specifically.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? At this, Councilman Dorsey?
Another question for planning, not for Caroline. You mentioned in passing the Greenway Trails Network. Where is that located, the plan located relevant, relative to this location?
Is there, is there a map that I could reference to, to everyone?
I might be able to help assist that in answering that. I believe it's on the abandoned rail line. It's on the rail line that's, that Caroline had mentioned being closed.
I can maybe answer that. If you have the, the color zoning map in front of you?
Yeah.
It runs on the purple property behind the green property where, that's going to be redeveloped for townhouses. That's all for, that's all, it was the bed of what used to be Iris Street, and it became a railroad right-of-way, and the Greenway Trail will run down that, all the way down to Boston Street.
In fact, we actually had the, the developer of the site, the Planning Commission required that, that they dedicate a pedestrian easement through their property to connect to the future trail to be developed.
So?
Oh, here, it's actually, it's shown on the last page of the packet I handed out. It connects in, if you see the townhouse development layout, in the middle, there's like a little green space, and you'll see there's a connection, and it says "Trail by Others." That's the Greenway Trail.
Thank you.
Okay, any, Councilman, Caroline?
This may actually be a question for Liam in DOT, but can you speak to an update on exactly that, the trail? We've heard a lot about it. Where's it at?
I can certainly work on getting you an update. Councilman, I don't have anything to present right now, but it's something we're actively talking about. You know, we're finalizing our, our CIP budget for next year, and we're also going to be submitting requests to our federal partners. So that's definitely on the radar, and I know it's, at least when I first started with the agency back in April of 2019, it was something that the administration was supportive of. But if you'd like a briefing on that, we can work on getting that for you.
Yeah, we'd love to know where we are in that process.
Absolutely, Councilman.
Okay. We're good? Okay, we're going to go with public testimony. Thank you, Caroline. Appreciate it. We're, Stephanie Archer Smith, am I right? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members, for allowing us to speak today. I'm the executive director.
I'm the executive director at Meals on Wheels of Central Maryland. We are the neighbor directly next to the property that's being considered today. And we are a nonprofit organization that has deep roots in Baltimore. We're encouraged by efforts to try to improve the city and enrich the city. We're really here to make sure that we prevent any unintended consequences by making sure that everyone understands exactly what we do, how we do it, and when we do it. We are a nonprofit that works to keep people living independently in their homes. We serve the aging and disabled individuals with hot meals daily, as well as other support services. We do that for three thousand people a year, for over three thousand people a year, and we deliver over one point three million meals. So what does that mean? Well, what that means is you may not hear trains, but we start operating at five o'clock in the morning, and we operate through the day till six o'clock in the evening. We have thirty-five vans. We have large trucks and tractor trailers that visit our property on a daily basis. We have dumpsters that need to be dumped. We have trash compactors. We have can crushers. We have property line that goes directly to the street and parking on Fleet Street that faces the development. We operate six days a week. It's a busy place. We employ a hundred and forty people. Ninety percent of those live in Baltimore City. We've been there since 1991, and we don't have any plans to relocate. So we want to make sure that we're... That everyone here understands what we do. They have a full understanding and appreciation of our work and that the record reflects what we do for the very reasons that Councilman Clark mentioned, that you may not hear the trains, but you're going to hear these things, and if people aren't aware of that, then they are certainly going to be concerned when they move in.
Okay. Before we... Are you finished?
Yes.
Before we go into questions, I want to acknowledge that the Vice President of the City Council, Sharon Green Middleton, has been with us, and I apologize for not acknowledging her earlier, but you've been here. Okay. Is there any questions for Stephanie? Councilor, use the microphone.
Hey, I'm... Where at on this map? Are you... Will you be? Where's your building approach?
You can show it. Come on up and show where you're at.
I'm not. Oh, okay. It was a one point two five acre property.
Okay. You have to...
Where's the houses?
And these are the...
Are they?
Yeah. These are each unit.
Oh, okay.
So it's quite a few units. So their building will essentially... They'll be... These houses will... Their neighbors.
Probably.
So are you here to...
Go ahead.
You support the project?
I'm not taking a position on the project. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of this and that the record reflects what we do, because I also don't want to be in a position to have to field those complaints in the future.
Councilman, the neighbors know. They're very aware. Okay.
Did you sit in on any of the meetings that they had with the community?
I did not. I was not contacted.
Okay, you're good. Councilman Clark? You agree?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. There's no other public testimony there. Before we go into our vote, Councilman Cohen, do you have anything you want to add? Or you just... You're good. Okay. Do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
I'll move the finding of facts.
Moved by Councilman Dorsey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sneed. All those in favor of the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The finding of facts are passed. There's no amendments to this bill. Do I have a motion to move the bill?
I move the bill.
Is that Dorsey?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Pinkett second.
Pinkett second? There's no amendments. Right seater votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Clark? Clark is yes. Costello?
Mr. Chair, point of order. Is this on the amendments or on the bill?
There are no amendments.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I certainly have concerns with new residential units in such close proximity to rail lines, especially along an industrial corridor, considering that this specific parcel is unlikely to accommodate future industrial use and because of the fact that Baltimore Industrial Group, South Baltimore Business Alliance, and the Baltimore Port Alliance have not voiced concerns with it, I vote yes.
Okay. Thank you. Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett is yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Stokes is yes. That's eight yes. The bill passes and will come out for second read February tenth. This concludes Bill nineteen dash zero four two six.
Let Sharon vote on the first bill, then we could call it back and vote on...
She wants to...
Want to vote on the first bill?
Yeah, we go back to the first bill.
Ready? Mr. President, I'd like to move that we return to the original bills this afternoon and have a revote on that, please.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Sorry.
Any objections? Okay. It passes. So on the bill originally, it was Sneed that moved, and it was Clark that second. Now we're going to take a vote. Right seater votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is yes. Clark?